This conference will now be recorded.
Call this meeting to order. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Dandy.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Compost.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Butcher.
Here.
Mr. Bolt. Mr. Bolt, here.
He's muted somehow. His name's very out.
Come on.
Mr. Dandy.
Here. Uh, you bow your heads. Let me lead you in prayer and pledge. Lord, this evening, I'd like to take this opportunity to always thank you for what you've given us, Lord. I want to thank you for us having a good community, Lord, a vibrant community, Lord. One community that continues to move forward, Lord, in every aspect, Lord. Being on the business side, public side, bringing the government side. We continue to move forward in these current situations, and we are adapting and overcome. And we will prevail in the end, Lord. And I want to thank you for that. And all the blessings that you give in the community, Lord. And I'd like to thank you also for the rise in the oil and gas prices that have foreseen that will help our community and help some of our community neighbors get back to work and so forth. So it is a big positive, and we are moving in the right direction. Thank you for that. Also like to give you, thank you for all our employees, Lord. Thank you for the servicemen that are servicing across overseas, Lord. And may we protect them, Lord, and may we stand with them, Lord, in anything they do and provide our support as a community to them, Lord. Sometimes it's, we never know what the outcome is when we have a new president. But we ask you to bless us, bless them, Lord, and their families. Also with our fire and our first responders, police. Bless them, Lord, and all the obstacles they have to overcome, Lord. Bless all the entities without, throughout the state, throughout this nation, and all that we've had to overcome this past year and that this year that we all can strategize together to move this nation as well as our small community forward and overcoming all these obstacles that have been placed with us. And we ask you in your name, Lord. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship amongst united cultures. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, with one minor adjustment, and that would be to remove, under non-action items, the discussion of city manager's annual evaluation format.
Second motion was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Roll call, old Shannon.
Mr. Bolt.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy.
Yes.
Mr. Compost.
Yes.
Mr. Beal.
Yes. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the minutes submitted February 8, 2021.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Bolt. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Roll call, old Shannon.
Mr. Compost.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Bolt.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy.
Yes.
Mr. Beal.
Yes. Moving on to Commissioner and staff reports. Uh, City Public Works Director, Wyatt.
Mayor, Commissioners, just like to give you a brief update on this current last week that we had with the winter storm. Um, after our calls, we had over 50 calls for busted pipes. And they did go around multiple buildings with fire suppression systems that did frost and come back. And so they did pop some of the systems and actually flood a couple of the buildings around town. Um, other than that, we did have multiple residential calls for after hours to shut off water for busted and frozen pipes. But other than that, I'm open for any questions.
So board have any questions for Wyatt? Thank you, Wyatt. Moving on to, uh, City Accountant Garrett.
Yes, your mayor and commission. I'm pleased to report that the February grocery seat tax is even almost $100,000 compared to last month. That's why I have to report, sir.
Thank you, Garrett. Is there any questions for Captain Garrett? There is no questions. Moving on to City Clerk Shannon.
I have nothing.
Is there any, any questions for Clerk Shannon? There's no other questions. Moving on to Commissioner Bolt.
I have nothing to add.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bernard.
I'm good at this time, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Compost.
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dandy.
I have nothing at this time.
Appreciate it. Moving on to Police Chief David Rodriguez. Is there any questions for Chief Rodriguez? There's no question for Chief Rodriguez. Moving on to Chief Lizardo.
Nothing to report, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Any question for Chief Lizardo? There's no question for Chief Lizardo. Moving on to City Manager James Williams.
Uh, a date on House Bill 4, if you had not kept up to date on that. One thing that they did do is pass the House. It is now in various, or I can't remember which Senate committee it is, but it did pass the House with a couple of, with an amendment, but other than that, it's still working its way through the system. Have not found out what date it may go to the different committees, but it is scheduled. So the, the next thing I have, I know I have visited individually with the commissioners, but I would like to just come out publicly and provide everyone my notice that I am officially going to retire from the city after 27 and a half years. As you know, we've been involved in the State Public Employees Retirement Association for, for many years. I started my, my full-time employment with the city in 1993. But actually, my first job, I was a lifer with the city back in 1990. Uh, we have a 25-year retirement with the municipal plan, and I am eligible to retire. Um, I do this after, I did take some time off, um, as I had had the time to take. And after discussions with my family in regards to my health as well as my ability to retire, uh, it's, uh, I've actually exceeded the number of, of, of years that I need to retire. Um, it doesn't come lightly, but honestly, I have to put my family and myself before the community for the first time. So I'm very sad that I'm having to retire from an organization that I've dedicated my adult life to, uh, but I am excited not only for myself and, and what awaits out there, but also the opportunities that the city's put together. Uh, I'm very proud of what we, as a community, have accomplished. Uh, it truly has been a team effort from the commission, from the staff, and also from the public. I know that I do have some accrued leave, but I do fully intend to work up until March 28th. That will be my last day with the city. Even after that, I'll still remain available because I want to make sure that the transition is as smooth as possible. But I will be here to assist you all in whatever capacity I need, even post-retirement. But I want to thank the commission. I've really enjoyed and still will for the next month, enjoy working with you all and for you all. And once again, I'm going to miss every one of you, every one of our employees and the workplace. Uh, but that's all I have there.
Anybody, any of the commissioners want to respond to James Compost?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead to Mr. Compost.
Uh, would you like to say that I understand James, uh, your position and I most certainly empathize with that. I want to formally and publicly thank you for your years of service to the city of Lovington, uh, your dedication and your commitment was never questioned. And so I want to thank you and, and appreciate everything you've done for the city. And we just hope that you remain close and, uh, you know, know that you'll always be a part of the Lovington family. Thank you, James.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to, uh, make a comment. James, I just know when you were young and getting started, I want to say James was the youngest, uh, fire chief. And I, when I came on board as city commissioner, a couple of years into it, he became fire chief. And he was the youngest fire chief Lovington has ever had. Uh, also, when he stepped into the city manager position, he was the youngest city manager Lovington has ever had. So this gentleman right here has taken a lot on his shoulder and has done a lot for the community of Lovington at, at the young age. And it's difficult, uh, trend that you have to go on. You know, you've got public opinion, you've got commissioner opinion, you've got employee opinion, you know, you've got state opinion. So if it, uh, it's hard, there are hard shoes to wear. And I commend you, James, and I really appreciate everything you've done for this community. And, and I, I enjoyed working with you for the last 17 years as a commissioner. And I want to thank you for always being respectful to me and my family. And I wish you the best, and I hope that you stick around with us and help us in, in different areas that, that, uh, we may request your assistance for, sir. But I, I want to say thank you, James.
Thank you, sir.
Any other commissioner want to make a comment?
I just want to say, I've, I've known, uh, Mr. Williams for the last eight and a half years or so or better, him and his family. And I just want to say he's always, you know, done what we've asked of him, very proud of it. That's a great decision. He's always heard me say, it's not about money. It's about family. It's about friends. It's about your life. And I wish you the best in whatever endeavor you and your family venture on too. And then just God be with you. I'm very proud of you, though. It's been an honor to work with you, serve with you as a team member. Going to miss you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Moving on to, uh, the man, he's in and out. He has bad service, but he had nothing to report. Do you guys have anything, Commissioners have anything to report to James with the city attorney? There is none. I, I am opening the floor up for a public comment. Please state your name. I have closed the floor for public comment. Moving on to James.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, we have Commander Sean Roach with the Lee County Drug Task Force here. He's, uh, going to provide you all an update on 2020 activities. Here you go, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I appreciate y'all having me tonight. So, uh, I think you did this two years ago, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, we try to do this each year now. I took over 2017 as the commander. Since that time, I'm trying to give an activity each year to the different commissions that were, that were involved in this. Obviously, Lovington, Big Park has a member on the task force as well as the Sheriff's Office right now. Off PD has two openings that we'll discuss a little bit later. But I just want to give this quick activity report to you guys to let you know where, what we're doing and try to let you know a little bit what's going on during the year. In 2020, uh, the County Drug Task Force worked a total of 135 cases throughout the year. Among those cases, we worked several major investigations with Drug Enforcement Administration and some of our other federal partners. During those 135 cases, we made 74 arrests in the Lee County area. Some of those notable arrests didn't necessarily happen in 2020, but these, those individuals may have been sentenced in 2020. Um, the two notable ones I pulled out was Marco Kowick, who's from here in Lovington, was sentenced to 70 months for drug trafficking. And Rafael Medina was sentenced to 87 months for drug trafficking. Um, also part of those investigations, the last Piv wire attack case we did in 2018, um, all those defendants, I think there was 11 or 12 final defendants in that case, all of them played guilty. Everybody's just pending sentencing, as well as Leroy Castillo. I wanted to talk a minute about that one. Um, just to kind of get my guys, I obviously couldn't do what we do without the task force guys being able to patrol off and up. But Leroy Castillo had been a fugitive from Lee County since 2014. Um, some of the guys at the task force worked with the US Marshals, and they were actually able to locate Leroy in Mexico. And the US Marshals got, uh, federal counterparts in Mexico and got him brought to the United States. He's also cleared guilty. In 2020, there has been 41 fugitives from the, so that's fugitives that are Lovington, Hobbs, other agencies across the country may have had. Uh, we assisted a lot with United States Marshal Service out of Roswell. Uh, US Marshal Service in Roswell has two marshals there right now. So when they have somebody over here, they'll generally reach out to the task force to try to get assistance with picking those individuals up. So that's where a lot of the 41 fugitives come from, assisting our partners. Assets seized in 2020, seizures, actual cash, seizure in the amount of $112,018 of the total cap seized in 2020. And other assets, whether that be vehicles, anything else like that, value total was $421,300. Getting into narcotics, marijuana seized in 2020, total of 9.25 kilograms, which is just over 20 pounds of marijuana. That marijuana has a street value of $46,277.50. Cocaine seized in 2020, total of 389.1 grams, which is just under a pound of cocaine for the street value of $38,910. Obviously marijuana and cocaine, if I was to rate them on a scale in Lee County, methamphetamine would be number one, heroin number two, cocaine number three, and then down to marijuana. Heroin seized in 2020, total of 2,026.55 grams, which is 4.7 pounds of heroin with a street value of $202,655. Just kind of giving you an idea of what that looks like. That's one of the cases we have, just two pounds of heroin. If you notice the clear bags on top of heroin, also located a firearm in that case on that individual. And then the back on the bottom is some pills, uh, which I'll get to in a little bit more depth on them. Methamphetamine seizures in 2020, total of 5,119.24 grams, which is 11 and a half pounds of methamphetamine. It was a street value of $511,924. I'm going to explain my next picture a little bit, but let's say there, we seized 11.5 pounds. Here's the seizure we had, it's 28.2 pounds of meth. Uh, what happened on this case was there were several different task forces involved, us, Carlsbad, and Roswell. So at the end of the day, when you get all that all together, the task force would basically split the, split the amounts for the paperwork part. And so hence why I said 11.2, 28.2 there. Uh, so that was the one traffic stop. Firearms seized along our lines last year, total of 24 firearms received in 2020. Okay, so these are the pills that were in that first picture a while ago. I want to talk about those. Those pills, 3,477 fentanyl pills received last year, these seven pills have a street value of $139,080. Um, those pills are blue, blue pills. And 99% of the time when we get those pills on the street, everyone thinks they're high for codones. That's what they look like. Or oxycodones, depends on which markets they have on it. But like I said, most of them have come back as, as fentanyl pills. Um, we don't have the fentanyl powder in the streets yet that we're aware of in Lee County, but those pills are very much out in Lee County. Suboxone strips, seizures in 2020, is total of 278 suboxone strips were seized. The majority of these, if not all of them, were seized inside the jail for the total value of $192,000. So box scripts are basically, um, think about them like the old mystery scripts. Um, they're used to help with addictions. Um, inside the jail, they become very valuable because it's just like having narcotics in the jail. And a geo-prison, they'll generally tell us those strips, it depends on the time, depends on how they've been locked down. The values of those strips will go anywhere from $200 to $400 a strips, um, inside the jail walls. Full seizures between narcotics and accidents, the County Drug Task Force seized 1,508,205.50. In comparison to last year, our approved HIDO budget in 2020 was $399,211. Received supplemental funding requests last year from HIDO in the amount of $19,081. This additional money provided another canines to the Sheriff's Office Canine Program, a new server for the task force, and a portable workstation that could use in case COVID-19 quarantines happen again, allowing our officers or our secretarial staff to work from home. Current personnel that I listed, myself and other Lee County Sheriff's Office, are different members from Lee County. We have three agents from Lee County, an agent from Lovington, and our newspaper assistants from Lee County. We currently have two vacancies from House Police, Police Department. Uh, the most recent vacancy started this, uh, August 2018 was the last time we had anybody. And 2016 was the last time we had the two, two full vacancies, I mean, two full positions. Activity for the past five years, uh, putting this presentation together. I received our fighter totals from HIDO, so I just figured I'd put members, kind of get all of our, the five year before done. Um, 40 details of disruptors now, essentially drug trafficking organizations. That's our main objective with HIDO, is to take out the big fish. Um, heroin was 4.59 kilograms, cocaine 4.3, marijuana 7.9, methamphetamine 86.05. Total cap seized was 169,000, also 18,000. Asset seized was 1.4 million. There was 502 arrests and 178 firearms seized. So in total, narcotics seized in those five years was 165.955 kilograms, a value of $16,595,000. So I told you, I just want to thank y'all for providing the agent for Lovington, um, for the support and open up to any questions, I might have.
Board of Commissions, do you have any questions?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd just like to know that I'm, you know, from the streets or anything like that. But when you guys seize the money and all that stuff, is that actually thrown back into the drug task force program for you guys to operate for your officers or?
Unfortunately, no. It used to be until four years ago, four, five years ago. And the state of New Mexico changed the force of laws. It was originally directed, if you read everything, towards seizing vehicles during DWI offenses.
Yes.
But unfortunately, that was a big umbrella and it took a fall out. And so if we, so I guess the short answer is yes, you can seize the money, but it goes to the general fund of the state of New Mexico. And the problem with that is us as a task force, I just showed you our budget, 399,000. We spend, in order to seize money, you have to do the different, you know, advertising the money, the different court costs and all that. We incur that, that expenses to seize it, and then we don't get a dime of what goes in. It all goes to the general fund. Money's not as big an issue to me as the footside firearms are the same way. Uh, we can't, used to, you could seize firearms, get rid of them. Can't do that anymore because they're considered leasing for profit. So now with the firearms, if you seize a firearm from person A, and they're a felon, but their sister person B legally can own a gun, they can release that gun back to their sister. So that, you know, and we don't know what happens when we turn around and walk away. That gun goes right back. Pegas Valley Drug Task Force, or in Carlsbad a couple of years ago, seized the same gun three times in a year.
That's fine.
So the force of laws are really hard. That's why a lot of the taxes are down because people are not moving. Doesn't get paid worth.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you, do you have any projections on, on where we're heading? Do you think if there's an increase or decrease in, in the near future?
As far as on the drugs or across the Pacific?
Yes.
So I've been here five years. I moved, I moved from Texas here five years ago, going on six years. And the meth is king here. And it's, it doesn't, nothing ever touches it. Nothing ever comes. You saw the numbers. Um, you had marijuana in five years, meth at 86 kilos, marijuana is at 70. But that's because every now and then you'll hit a, you know, 20-pound load of marijuana, 30-pound load of marijuana. What's scary is we hit those same size loads of meth. Um, that, that one fish I showed you, the 28 pounds is not uncommon. Uh, we started our first big case when I was here as far as as a commander in 2017. And that year, we took off a 32-pound load. Like, for whatever reason, whether it be, you know, the location, you know, Sosa, other bigger cities, Love it, Midland, all that, it's a hotspot, and I don't see it slowing down at all. Everybody talks about legalization of marijuana, but that's, that's not where our issues are at. Um, so it's not going to, I don't think it will affect the, the overall numbers of things the same. It's just the different types.
Thank you, sir. Is there any more questions from Board of Commissions?
Mr. Mayor, if I just, if I could just make a quick.
Yes, sir.
Commander, I just want to thank you. I come from a law enforcement background myself and I started out working undercover as a matter of fact before I even went to the academy. So I can certainly understand a little bit of the work that you guys put in. So, but I just want to thank you guys. I know that the work is very dangerous and and very, it requires a strong commitment from you guys. And I just want to thank you for what you guys do for our county. I appreciate you guys.
Thanks, sir. There's no further questions from the Board of Commissions? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I just want to make a quick comment real quick. State Representative Randy Pettigrew tried it on shortly for public comment and he just wanted to wish James, City Manager James Williams well and, and, and all that he's done for the community of Lovington and he looks forward to working him still at the state level as well as he will be missed. That statement came from State Representative Randy Pettigrew.
James?
Yes, sir. Sorry. Next, next item we do have for discussion, we have our Senior Citizens Board. The terms of Shirley Cho, Joyce Drury, Tom Striften and Henry Gutierrez are expired. And so we will have an action item at your next commission meeting for reappointment of these individuals who still continue to serve, want to serve, or you can also appoint someone else. But we will definitely take anybody from the public who is interested in serving, so we can provide those names to you. But this will be on your next agenda.
Is there any questions from the board? There's no questions from the board moving on to action items? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2021 dash 011, adjustment of sewer rates.
Take it.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Campos, James, or Gary.
If I may, your mayor of commission. This comes to you with the understanding that the city operates two utilities just like a business. That means that the water and wastewater utilities must generate enough revenue through user fees to cover all the costs of operating the business. In addition to staff time, equipment maintenance, materials and supplies needed to provide the direct services of each utility, there are other costs such as debt service payments and funding for capital improvements. These must also be recovered through. What we are showing here is this is our second year, the water and wastewater utility operations have been tracked and reported separately, which shows the cost of wastewater operations, which does not include equipment replacement or infrastructure improvements at exceeding the fees collected. And so we've given a proposal to you to increase the rates. I'm available for any questions if you have.
And you have options on the slide.
Oh, good. I should share that we presented this to you with three different options, option A, option B, and option C. And each one has a focus in a different area. For example, with option A, the purpose behind that particular adjustment is to ensure that we cover all of the customer deposits that we have and also ensure that we cover our final debt payment, which is a requirement for our loan agreement with the New Mexico Department of Finance. Option B ensures that we'll be able to cover basically just our annual debt payment. And then option C, just ensures that we're able to cover the customer deposits.
Gary, this is Commissioner Campos. So your recommendation is option A, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Gary Scott Bold here. Now, in the paper here, it says final debt payment. Is that incorrect?
When we're talking debt payment, what we're saying is that we are expected to have the amount of our final debt payment as a cash reserve in that fund. And so that is what we're saying. We have a 355,560 dollar payment that we need to keep in our cash reserve to ensure we can make our final debt payment.
So that's an annual recurrence?
We pay that every year. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, and it's also my understanding that the last rate increase was five years ago and then one previous was 10 years ago. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Gary Scott Bold again. If we go with option one, option A, I'm sorry. I'm reading that we'll be having a positive ending cash balance of $40,000 as of June 30th. What is our plan going forward? Are we buying with that, you know, we're going to be having a positive? What are we going to be doing? Are we going to be buying equipment or upgrading facility? What's the plan on that? Because I don't have anything here. Show me what we're looking to do.
That is a good point, sir. And the main thing is the need for capital improvements.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bold, what we mean by that is this would allow us to replace aging sewer lines, aging lift stations. So that positive balance would allow us to not only maintain the system, but be more proactive in making sure that the system has a more useful lifespan. So that positive balance will be reinvested in improvements to the wastewater.
Okay, or is we going to get some specifics on that, James, as far as what we're going to be doing? How much that's going to be costing?
Actually, Wyatt is evaluating everything as far as long-term plans, asset management, to come up with a systematic replacement, capital improvement replacement plan that we have. So it would identify, you know, increasing our lift station capability, for instance. One thing is upgrading the pumps to where they have grinder pumps. Since we are starting to see a substantial increase in the amount of, you know, rags and towels that are clogging up our pumps. We also are looking at, you know, what equipment out of the wastewater plant? Because I believe that wastewater plant was upgraded how many years ago? In 2007, and roughly about every 20 years, you've got to go in and rework that system from what we tell. So starting a planned approach as far as how we can do that without having to incur any more debt.
When are we going to receive this proposal, James?
It's currently being worked on right now. Well, as I shared, Wyatt is currently getting that, starting that assessment and getting it, getting it done. So we do have that formal plan that we can implement.
Okay.
And I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Bold, because pretty much after tonight, if we approve this, then you'd like to see what our objectives are with this additional funding that's going to be available after it is approved tonight and understand where you're coming from, sir.
Well, I like to, I like to, I like to know where we're headed, David, because right here, this is a reactive. What we're doing is reacting to a situation. It's not proactive. And I've been asking before as far as having information and everything, and I keep asking and I don't receive. So it's getting to a point where I want to know what we're doing. I want to be able to see it. So that's what I'm talking about, David.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate that, Commissioner Bold. And it will be addressed, sir.
Thank you.
If I may, initially, we're going to be overcoming a deficit in the fund. And so that's going to take a few months. So until we overcome a deficit, that gives us some time to make a, put a plan together.
Gary, what Commissioner Bold, and just to recap on what Commissioner Bold said, that it was been a negative for three years now. And what it is, is trying to make some sort of forecast in the future, trying to be proactive to ensure that it doesn't happen to where we're waiting till we're in a hard spot to make it. You know, you don't want to work on the crisis. You always want to work on your plan. So currently, it's not a crisis, but we're in the, in that line item. It's a negative. Probably we should have did some projections way out and made, probably made some changes prior to getting to that point. And that's what Commissioner Bold is, is looking at. And I agree what he's saying is to be proactive. So, yeah, I know we're going to have, we're, we're paying back some stuff that, but it should have been addressed prior to that, you know. So maybe in the near future, when you look at your numbers, just try to be more, put a forecast up there, you know, hey, we forecasted the rates are going up, we project the rates are going up. Maybe we need to increase rates today because the forecast indicates that the rates are going up. So let's, let's be proactive, take care before we get to that point and the rates are too high. And now we're having to make an overnight decision to correct. I believe that's where you're coming from, right, Commissioner Bold?
Mayor Correia, you are 100% correct. Because I think myself, as a citizen of Lovington, and speaking for the citizens of Lovington, it's a lot easier for us to do this gradually, little at a time, than get hit all at once. You know, there's people that we have to think about, people that are limited on their finances, you know. So I mean, there's a lot of people in different situations that we have to think about. And some of the people, it's going to be hard for them to come up with this. And I understand it's stuff that can be addressed, but having to react to it, I don't agree with that. Having that it's something gradual that the people can work with, I'm behind that 100%. But yes, you are 100% correct on what I tried to get across. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bold. Certainly, other, yes, sir, Commissioner.
If I may, a question for Gary. Gary, if we went with option A, how much of an increase would that be for each individual customer?
That's what we're presenting on the slide, the option A. A residential customer would have an increase of $17 per month to their bill. A commercial customer would have an increase of $26.60 per month on their bill.
And so forth with option B and option C, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's a pretty good jump. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any questions, other questions by the Board of Commissions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gandy.
Ma, Gary, when are we finished paying our debt off on the sewer, sewer plant?
In November of 2029, I believe. Let me double check. Yes, sir. The last payment for that debt will be the 4th of 2029. We have basically nine more payments to make.
Nine more payments at $350,000 a payment?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. And then, so the, the yearly cushion, we'll call it, would be, what would that price be or that number be? After our debt payment, how much of a gain would we have?
Oh, after our debt payment on this?
After our debt payment, after our operations, what kind of figure are we looking at roughly, you know, that we're gaining in our account every, you know, every year?
Our goal should be to gain over 500,000 or basically 550,000 to meet our covenant for our debt. They are requiring that we always have a net increase in our cash position by 150% of our debt payment every year.
I think he was specifically targeting the sewer. I think that's the question he was.
Is that, is that specific?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
So after, after eight years, we should have about 4.5 cushion in the debt, in the waste, wastewater here as for repairs, maintenance and large ticket items like that. What was the, do you remember what the initial cost for the repair at the sewer plant was?
No, sir, I do not know. I just know that the initial loan that we have here was 4.5 million, 813,000.
So 5.0, we'll just round it up, call it 5.2.
Well, 5,800,000.
Tell me that again, please.
The initial loan for this treatment plant that we're paying on was 5.8 million dollars.
Oh, 5.8, okay. I misunderstood you. I'm sorry. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gandy. Is there any other questions by the board? There's no other questions. Commissioner Bernard, would you like to amend your motion, sir? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the resolution 2021 zero dash zero eleven to amend it to option A. That we go with option A. Motion was made to go with option A by Commissioner Bernard. Is there a second?
Who had the second, the mayor?
I did.
Okay, Commissioner. Say that again. I'm sorry, Commissioners.
Commissioner Gandy was asking who had the second in the, the initial motion, and I, as that I did. But I haven't seconded this motion.
Okay. So I make that statement once more. Commissioner Bernard made a motion to amend it. Motion to go with option A. Do I have a second?
So my question is, if we make an amendment and Campos doesn't second it, since he already had the initial second, does this nullify this motion? Or can I make the second?
You can make the second. If not, the motion dies.
All right, well, I seconded.
Okay, motion was made to amend it to option A, seconded by, I mean, motion was made by Commissioner Bernard to go with option A, and it was seconded by Commissioner Gandy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we vote on that, just something about it doesn't feel comfortable to me. Can we check with Pat to make sure that we are still within our rules?
Yes, sir, of amendment. Yeah, but he's in and out. James is going to see if he can reach him.
Feel like we need to have a jeopardy thing going on. I think he's in a bad spot in the reception. Good table. That would be the safe thing is to just table it. So that way we do have legal here, not even a conservative, safe approach to it.
Yes, we'll go with another option. Because it will, it will die.
If it dies, for lack of Commissioner Campos wanting to second the amendment, then you could actually ask for another motion.
Commissioner Mayor, at this time, Board of Commissions, so it's coming my attention, Commissioner Gandy had some thoughts on, on how we are, hold, just a second.
I'm getting the dot, dot, dot.
Yeah. Okay, Patrick's coming back, he's alive.
Yes, so if the person who provided the original second does not agree, the motion would die, then someone could make a new motion.
Okay. So our understanding that, that since Commissioner Campos did not second it, because he did initially second the first motion, that it does die. Because he did not second the motion when it was amended, so the motion does die. So I open the floor for a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, before we make another motion, since we're basically still in discussion.
Yes, sir.
I would like to kind of fill out my, the, the options of our two commissioners, Mr. Bolt and Commissioner Campos on this and see where they're wanting to head with this.
Commissioner Campos and Commissioner Bolt, do you have any of these options in mind, sir? Gentlemen?
Commissioner, Gandy, I appreciate the opportunity for further discussion. You know, after I see that there was a $17 increase per customer on option A, I think it's a little hefty, I would be more comfortable with option B, probably, and then option C in the second, as a second option. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, please, go ahead, Commissioner Bolt.
Yes, would it be possible for Gary to explain option B a little more?
The primary and the primary perspective that Gary comes from is the financial side. I'm wanting to ensure that we keep our reserve requirement for our final debt payment per our debt covenant. And then cover any deficit that we have in the fund. And that's essentially what option B is set to accomplish.
Yes, and that option there, I would be, I would be okay with because we're not, we're taking care of our final debt and we're covering, covering our average loss. So we're not going any further backwards. And hopefully we'll be able to make a little headway into it. So option B, I am okay with. Option C, I would like, but I said option B, I am fine with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolt. Commissioner Gandy?
Okay, well, here's my two cents, and it's probably not worth that. But we tried this once before with the water bill where we spread it out. And we spread it out over six months or something like that. And as you can see, option B doesn't get us anywhere moving forward. We're still either treading water or we're not making a forward progress. I understand the $17 is quite painful for all of us. But unfortunately, like I said, we probably should have had incremental increases along the way. But we're where we're at, so there's no sense in just getting something that's a break even. We probably need to set it up where we're moving forward and we have a cushion. But that's my two cents.
And I agree with you, Scotty, but you know what? I want to have plans in front of me so I can look at them and I can see them, and I don't have that. So that's what I'm asking for.
I understand your plans, but the plans can come at a later date. Right now, we're in a hole and we need to get out.
And that's option B.
The way I see option B, it's a break even. You're covering your loss and you're getting your debt payment, but you're not putting anything forward. And then a year from now, we're going to increase again so we can make that forward movement. And we're still at a loss. So we've lost a year and a loss, a loss of a year and however many more thousands of dollars there. So I wish to disagree.
Well, that is fine, but you know what? We do have budget meetings. I believe we can revisit this and we can make changes as necessary.
Commissioner Bolt, I happen to agree with you. I'm thinking also of our citizens who are on a fixed income, our elderly served citizens, those who are on social security. They don't get an increase per month themselves. So that's where my mentality is, I think $17 is quite a bit high. Even $14 is high, but you know, and thinking like Commissioner Gandy's thinking, we have to do what we gotta do with the least amount of damage or injury to those elderly or people on fixed incomes. That's where I sit.
Thank you, Paul.
Gary, may I ask a question again?
Yes, sir.
On the, don't we have a program for seniors where they get a discount off of this?
Yes, sir, it's automatically all our seniors will get a 10% off on this increase.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I open the floor for a motion, excuse me. Board of Commissions, under resolution 2021-011, adjustments of sewer rates, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, I know it's gonna get shot down, for resolution 2021-011, adjustment of the sewer rates for option A, which we'll probably hear crickets.
Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Campos, I request a point of order since there is no second. And we move on to other, other, other motions?
Okay, that, we're saying that motion dies. Open the floor once again for any motions for resolution 2021-011, adjustments to sewer rates.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion in that regard to be considered, that we consider option B under resolution 2021-011, adjustment of sewer rates.
I second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Bolt for option B. Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion, roll call, hold, Shannon?
Commissioner Butcher?
No.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
No.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution 2021-011. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we consider accounts payable.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Bolt, Gary?
If I may, your man in commission, we have for you the list of payables, a little larger than the last one. But of course, we made our monthly payment to waste management, which was 150,000 all by itself. If I'm available, do you have any questions?
Gary Scott Bold here.
Yes, sir.
The one Visa there for 1,131 dollars, 39 cents, what was that for?
What was the name of that organization?
Visa.
Oh, the Visa, I'm sorry. Let me look at the detail on that. There were three transactions for supplies related to the youth center. And one of them doesn't have an explanation, which is an $11 amount. However, they needed the Adobe Creative Cloud. It was an annual subscription for $1,009 to support the youth center.
Now, some of this stuff for the youth center, Gary, is that covered underneath the COVID fund or not?
Some of it is, yes.
Would any of this be covered?
I don't know. I have to defer to the city manager for that.
I'm trying to pull it up, and I'm operating off of a Chromebook right now to let's see. The yes. Yes. Yes, sir, it will. It's part of the, the, it is part of the operations for the youth center as it relates to COVID, so yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, Commissioner Campos here, who is OCLC Incorporated, $1,320 to them?
That's related to the library, it's a subscription that they have for accessing documents.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions by the Board of Commission? There's no further discussion? Roll call, hold, Shannon?
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes. Yes. Now, payables are approved, do I have a final motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion, roll call, hold, Shannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Yes. This meeting is adjourned, thank you, gentlemen.